...of the Board of Causa County Commissioners on Tuesday, August the 1st, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the clerk's seat, call roll.
Commissioner Katting.
President.
Commissioner Hood.
President.
Commissioner Prince.
President.
Attorney Clint Smith.
President.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Campbell.
President.
Okay, do we have any additions to the agenda this morning?
I do not, sir.
Okay. The agenda will stand as posted. I would like to introduce the audience and start over here.
Steve Laswell, Silver Cliff.
Commissioner Laswell.
Mr. Green.
Anne Marie Donna, Silver Cliff.
Lizbeth Harmon, Silver Cliff.
Jackie Bubus, Forliss.
Ken Batterson.
Dan Fisher, Silver Cliff.
Tim Sidowa, East Cliff.
Pete Gerhardt.
Okay, thank you very much for being here this morning. Do we have any public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. Smith a question.
Sure.
Is that okay? The last time I asked you if any of the executive sessions were illegal, and you said no, and I'd like to know, is it statutory that certain matters be covered or discussed in an executive session? That means, is it required by law that certain issues, like personnel and legal, be handled in an executive session? Is that clear?
You know, I understand what you're saying. Yes, there's a statute that says when it's appropriate to go into executive session. This board has followed those statutory requirements. Personnel issues should be discussed in executive session unless the person being discussed has made a specific request to have an open meeting. For me to give legal advice to the board, that is to be done in executive session. The only other thing I can think of where we've had an executive session with this current board was to discuss a security issue for the county, and that's another specific statutory matter that should be discussed in executive session.
So what I'm hearing is that the law requires that certain things be covered in executive sessions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How many executive sessions has this board had since November?
Approximately?
We weren't in this position.
You mean since January?
I mean, since January.
Since?
We took office in January.
Since whatever, since your?
January 10th. I don't know that we'd have to go back to our minutes.
Go back and look.
I'm going to guess, if I may, sir, that we probably had a half a dozen, but that's an estimate.
Does that sound relative?
No, I think there were more than that.
Probably a few more. I mean, not more than 10 at the most, would be my opinion.
Yeah, about 10.
Were those executive sessions called out of necessity?
Well, I believe so. There were several where I had to talk to them about the ongoing lawsuit, what's normally been referred to as the Hamilton Health and Lawsuit, before the matter was settled as far as the county was concerned, and then there were some additional legal issues relating to Dr. Hamilton's request for cattle guards that required legal advice to the commissioners in executive session. So I'd say at least half of the executive sessions have been for the purpose of me giving legal advice, and one was for me to brief the commissioners on a security issue that I was aware of, and that's still an ongoing issue.
How much is the public entitled to know about these executive sessions? I'll qualify that. Are we allowed to know the topic to be covered in the executive session, but not the content of the executive sessions themselves? In other words, if you have an executive session, am I entitled to know why you're having it?
When we go into executive session, before we do, we announce what the topic is going to be as much as we can without defeating the purpose of the executive session.
Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Smith?
To piggyback off that, then, Clint, you said personnel?
She said to piggyback off that.
To piggyback off that, Clint, personnel, you said personnel issues, unless the person has requested an open meeting. So you're saying that whenever you've had a personnel issue that went to executive session, the person knew about it and chose to do it in executive session rather than open meeting? Is that correct?
I don't.
Yes, that's what you said.
Well, I said that the person has a right in certain personnel issues to have it done in a public meeting. The personnel issues that we discussed, and I think there were probably, I guess I can think of about four different personnel issues that we discussed. We did not, well, we did, at least in one occasion, invite that person in. The others were in a preliminary stage where the person wasn't invited in to discuss it. It was for, so the answer to your question is no, they haven't been invited in on every executive session.
Thank you.
So when we have an executive session, it's pretty much necessary?
That's my opinion, my legal opinion, that when we do it, it's in accordance with the statute, and it is necessary on the personnel issues for the protection of the individual's right to privacy on the personnel issue, and on the legal issues because of the attorney-client privilege. And a security issue obviously speaks for itself. If it's a security issue, we don't want it made public until the security issue may have been resolved, and then we could certainly disclose it, the board could, if they chose to.
So the obvious reason for having executive sessions concerning personnel is to protect the privacy and the, quote, "reputation" of the person about which the sessions may held?
That's the primary reason, yes.
And I think where we come back to the public side, if they want to then have a personnel discussion, as we come out of our personnel meetings and say the next meeting, they then have the right to request that it be held in public. We can do it.
Yes, we can. Yeah, I understand that.
A lot of stuff we do in personnel issues, as an example, we have, I hope my mouth got myself in trouble now. If we have some issues of our procedures, of our protocol, of policies, those type of things that personnel become involved in, those are a lot of the things that we talk about. Was this inappropriate? Do we need to do this different? Is this something we can handle just through human resources, or is this something that needs to come up at our level? And quite frankly, a number that we've had been resolved very satisfactorily for the party's concern.
So the point is, is that the executive sessions that have been held were necessary?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
They were not illegal, as Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much.
You've got one in the bag.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, sir.
I live on a keepsake loop, and there's a serious problem with road maintenance. There are sections on that road where the ditches are nonexistent or have been blocked. People have driveways that don't have drive culverts. Water is forced out onto the road. Erode in the road causing extensive damage and safety issues.
What address, sir?
I live 2103 keepsake.
So I can identify the area that we're looking at.
About the whole loop, two mile loop. My opinion, majority, if not all, of the damage caused by the rain, I had three inches of rain in my house over the weekend, could have been prevented if the ditches were in existence and maintained. There are several sections where the ditches do not exist at all. A lot of the culverts are blocked. One individual installed his own covert and then filled the ditch in up to within a foot of the covert, so no water can get into the covert under the driveway.
We're aware of that. We have a lot of culverts in the counties that are blocked. We're working on cleaning them, and I will go out and, as the commissioner responsible for road and bridge, I'll go out and look and see, and I will relay the message on to Gary Hyde, who's our road boss, and we'll be happy to look at it, sir. And right now, I apologize if we're not getting any out there because we've got an emergency situation when we have crew on the day, but we will get out there and look at it as soon as we schedule.
I totally understand. I'm talking about doing preventive measures.
Well, and?
Right now, the horse is out of the corral, so you can't worry about that. They need to get in and construct these ditches and make sure that the driveways are in compliance. Many driveways just come right out across the ditch and block it, because the water has no other place to go. And there's another issue that came up as well. Utility contractor cut a trench in a portion of keepsake loop, the West Lake. They're proposing installing a conduit for the phone company, did not properly backfill. He just pushed the material back across the ditch and went on. Next time it rained, we had a trench 18 inches deep, nine inches wide, and 40-some feet long.
Was this also on, also on keepsake? Okay.
And my question is, does the county have a policy on road cuts? I work construction industry, and we're always required to have a permit to cut a road or any work inside a right of way.
Yes, the general policy is that, you know, the road and bridge, and then you're responsible for repairing back to a standard of the road cut. We had a situation over here on 129 where there was a road cut made. The contractor filled it, and then it packed down, blew out, and so forth. The young man come down the road on his bicycle and hit the bump and had a wreck. We went back out, they refilled it, and I don't know if they've hot-passed it yet or not, but that will be the next step, because that is a paved road. But anytime we, and it's important that we recognize this, that we have to maintain those roads. We have, as a side issue, if you pile your driveway and you push the snow across the road, you are liable for violation, because that's illegal, because you're pushing snow across the county road. So again, that can create, just like a utility cut, it can create a rust spot in the road. So I'll be more than happy, and I do appreciate, you know, if we don't hear these things, we don't know about them.
I'll be more than happy to go out there with you if you so desire.
Okay. Another thing we're doing now, and some of you folks have seen it here in the valley, we're doing on pines, we're doing on some of the other roads we're going in, and redoing those roads and bringing, putting a crown in the middle so the water runs off of it, repairing the bar ditches, and where we are, in most cases, we're hauling material in, and we also have water trucks up there, so we can adequately pack the material.
They, in time, I think, they've never hauled material into keepsake loop and never put a water truck in.
We have a lot of roads, as a matter of fact, this last week, they were up on 358. Hauling some material in as well as grading and packing roads.
I know they haul in other roads around us.
Pardon me?
319 gets processed three or four times a year. We're lucky to get it once.
Well, I'll be happy, and I will take this up with our, we need to work it into our schedule. I don't believe in micromanaging, but when we have issues, I found our people very responsive to them, and I do appreciate that. And I'll, could you give me your phone number, sir? Or give it to me before you leave?
Commissioner Bridge has my phone number.
All right.
We spoke at Lance yesterday about this issue. It happens to be on my way home. I drove the entire loop. Yeah, it needs work. I mean, what can I tell you? So I told you we'd be receptive, and I asked you to come today to kind of just tell us what was going on. I thought Mr. Hyde, Gary Hyde, would be here this morning. He's on the agenda, but he's not on until 9:30, so he could hear it. But as Bob said, he's responsible for road and bridge, so he'll pass it on, and we'll do what's necessary. The only problem is, as you know, with all the rain we had, we have some major roads that we need to take care of first.
I'm not talking necessarily about today. I'm talking about tomorrow to prevent something happening the next day.
I'm with you. Correct. No problem.
And the way it works is that we all have areas, and I don't, oftentimes, if something comes to my mind that's in their area, I let them know about it, and I'm the commissioner responsible for road and bridge. Good. Anything else? Okay. Do I have any minutes this morning?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner items. Mr. Smith?
I just want to say that I've spent the last couple of days interviewing for the position upstairs in the extension office. So the interviews have been done, and both Beverly and Sarah will be finalizing the decision and checking references to them, so.
The only thing I've done, basically since yesterday, since there was our last meeting, I've spoken with our public health nurse and the doctor who is going to be overseeing her, and that's all in place right now. The doctor, Green, has agreed to do this, basically nothing, $1,000 a year. We agreed to pay that to her on a quarterly basis to make it as easy as possible. She signed the contract, and we're in full compliance at this point, so I'm very happy with the outcome of this.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. First of all, I don't know if Gary will be here or not this morning. Mr. Hyde had been out of town on business and is back in town this morning, but I'm happy to announce that we, as we speak right now, we have a track hole and at least three trucks hauling debris out of Hardscrabble Creek in Greenwood. The issues we talked about yesterday, if we have additional flooding, there's residents that are there, it's high risk, as well as our road. And as we speak, I heard a lot of chatter this morning coming in on the radio, they're going great guns down there. The second item relating to the flooding, I don't know if some of you have seen any pictures, and I've not been down the road yet, I've seen some pictures on South Hardscrabble. It appears to me that they have major, major road damage. Some of the pictures I've seen, the road's completely washed away. But that is a, the county road is two miles across Mr. Donnelly's property, and then from there on, it's Forest Service Road. I will be talking with Paul Crispin today to get his read on it, but we'd hope to have that road open by maybe Labor Day, or at least by the fall hunting season. And briefly, what I've seen in pictures on that particular section of road, and the road is closed, has been closed, there's some very, very severe damage. So as we know more, I'll let you folks know more. Okay, the last thing that we have, and Cindy, Howard will address it a little bit, we've had some questions raised as to what was our timeline of responses Saturday night? When did we receive notice of the flood? When were flood alerts sent out in the media? And she's putting together a very concise timeline of the calls that we've had and the calls that, and what the content of those calls were. So I hope within a few days, we're going to have an after-action. We call an after-action review to bring together half a dozen of those that were involved that night, the sheriff's department, road and bridge, maybe we'll have a citizen or two to sit down and say, okay, this is what we have, this is what we did good, this is what we can improve on. And we're even considering very seriously having some additional weather spotter training for people along Hardscrabble Creek. So when we have an issue, they say, well, it's raining. Well, okay, it's raining, but the other part of that phrase perhaps should be, it's raining hard, and I suspect we're going to have some flooding. Once you reach that, it has a whole different message than the fact that it's raining. Even though when they say it's raining hard, most people would think, well, that's enough to tell you, hey, it's raining hard out here, it's going to go someplace. But again, very fortunate, we did not lose any lives. I hope the damage has been minimal, and as I said, we're down there now clearing the debris out of Hardscrabble Creek, and that may take longer than we anticipate. Okay, that's all that I have, I think. Yes, ma'am?
Can I just get clarification, Donna, on, you said, doing interviews for the last couple of days, is that for both the positions that are now filled by Beverly and Sarah?
Yeah.
Sorry, Sarah?
It's just Beverly's.
Just Beverly's. Okay, thank you.
All right. Counselor?
Nothing to report today. I'll have a resolution for you tomorrow to amend our Colorado Open Records Act policy and procedures.
And I heard that the sand trout are biting real good out there on that creek, is that right? A little humor here, folks. I see no reason for an executive session, do either of you folks? Okay. Old business. We have the Valley Grant for 2018.
Victims Assistant Law Enforcement. This is an ongoing grant that Chris Barr administers.
This is a grant, folks, that last year, under Sheriff Barr, on his initiative, applied for a grant for victims' assistance. He asked for five, was going to ask for 5,000. We encouraged him to double it. He did, and I believe we did receive the 10,000. Something that I think is very, very important. If any of you have been victims of crime, you know that sometimes it can be very traumatic, and this position, we had it somewhat on a voluntary basis, but this lets us put some additional support into that position. I would open it up, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the Valley Grant for 2018. And what is the total on that, Brenda?
7,500, I believe.
Okay.
It's?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and accepted, that we do have the, submit again for the, about for the victims' assistance grant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same saying. Motion carries. Valley Grants approved.
I have one old item, if you don't mind me interjecting, an old issue.
On the Valley Grant?
No, no. Are you done with that? I'm sorry, I thought you were finished with that.
Yeah. And what do we have? Go ahead.
Okay. The Wetmore Building Project is ready for a final walkthrough. All the check items are supposedly done, and I'm going to get with Tom Duke, the architect, and we'll do a walkthrough to make sure, at least, Tom, Donna, did you want to be part of that?
I'd like to, if I could.
Okay, I'll be happy to call you. Bob, did you want to?
Yes.
I'll just call you, Donna. We'll set that up.
Let's see what our script and our, I think, two people are at it, we can look at it, but if I'm tied up with something, I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Okay, road and bridge this morning, I think I've already explained what the situation is with those folks.
Just to let you know, Gary will not be here, Roger will be here, but we've switched landfill and road and bridge time slots, because Roger couldn't be here until like 10:00, so Rusty's out in the hall, he's ready to go.
Come in, Mr. Rusty. Can you believe this? We're ahead of schedule.
I did not tell you that.
When these folks come in, they bring their lunch, because they might be two or three hours before we get to them. And how are you this morning?
I'm fine. So it's still early, but doing good so far this morning. I didn't get a report to Brenda, because I was out of town for a couple of days, but everything's going pretty well, except for all the water in the pits, which is normal for this time of year. And I'd like to see what you think. I'd like to put this in the paper, or both papers. Landfill fees, I think it'd just be good to, we hand them out all the time, but there's a lot of people that aren't getting them, I guess.
Just for the record, Rusty, that is no increase or anything, that's just.
No, no increase, right. Those are just the landfill fees. I've been putting that together for a little while, about a month or so, to get it more uniform.
Are these posted anywhere, on the outside, so people can see?
I would suggest also that we put the hours that the landfill is open and the just-closed, what we have out on the gate sign.
Do what now?
Put the hours that the landfill is open.
Oh, I see.
See, we say, open for the holidays and stuff, but just to get reminding people, and the fact that we do close it, because we have to finish up the day's work before the guys can go home, so the trash doesn't blow around.
Right, right.
And that's a very important part of it.
I think that's a very good idea.
I see nothing there that bothers me as the commissioner for landfill.
I checked with the Sentinel, they said they'd do it for 100, and Jim wasn't at the Tribune Friday, they were closed, and then he wasn't there yesterday, so I didn't get in touch with him, so I don't know what they would charge.
I beg, excuse me, ma'am.
I'm also going to ask that Chuck put this on our website, so that it's just not in one paper one time.
It's in, it's on the website already.
All of it?
Well, I don't know if that, but there's a lot of stuff on the website.
Well, let's make sure what he's posting, is requesting, is on the website.
I've checked, as we were talking about, equipment.
Mm-hmm.
I.e., a vehicle.
Right.
And I don't see anything at the, there's nothing on road and bridge, and we look up at the sheriff's department, I don't see what we've got hanging up there that makes a lot of sense. So.
Yeah.
I'd like the board's input, but I think we need to go ahead, and if you can find something used that's got some life in it yet, I think we need to go ahead and do it, because you have to have a county vehicle to maintain landfill.
Right, right. I'm going to take that pickup, Byron, the pickup that I'm using, he's got it running, but now the lights are bad on it, dude.
Well, we reached a point with old equipment that where, well, we still got it, but we got to work on it, although that's still costing us money too.
Sure, right.
Do I, do you have any thoughts, sir?
Not on the vehicle, I mean, obviously, you need the equipment to do your job.
You discussed it with Shannon, because we were talking about discussing what his fleet was.
I've been through those hoops, and there's nothing out there that I can find. I mean, we're Robin Peters, Bay Paul, and I think the best decision right now is for Rusty to go look and see what she can find, and then let us know.
Okay.
And see if we can, are you comfortable doing that?
We kind of, on that compactor, that front seal's leaking on it, and we've been putting a new seal in there about once a year, and so there's just too much pressure, too much crankcase pressure, so it's blowing that front seal. Those guys said this morning that we can put a breather on there. Byron figured this out, and get another breather and put it on there to alleviate that. And so that's only a couple hundred bucks. If we can do that, that compactor's good.
Go on with it. That's, you know, in your budget, you'll do it.
Yeah, so that 14,000 that was for that engine, we could possibly just use that, you know, this year, so.
Okay. Question, if I may. Couple months ago, in Wetmore, we met with the water well that they were going to drill at their cost, and the second one that we need. Has anything transpired on that?
No, I think they're still waiting for their grant money to come in.
Okay.
And as soon as that money comes into the state, and then they'll let us know what they're going to do, and I'm sure they'll come out and look and see if they want to drill one or two wells.
Go ahead.
I'm just hoping it's just one, but you never know.
My experience on the timeline, we're probably looking maybe sometime late this fall before they'll, and we probably will have to wait until next spring.
Right. But I said it'd be 2018, I'm sure, before anything happens anyway.
Okay, that's good.
Which is fine, you know, it's just going to be another expense.
Now, there've been some questions raised, Donna, and you may want to help elaborate on this, as to the landfill hours, the hours that they work in regards to some of the others, but the landfill is a separate entity, and as such, it has some unique demands to it, and the landfill just isn't something that we have from an eight to four or five days a week kind of a deal. We do have a lot of people on weekends, on Saturday, and And, uh, we do have a lot of people on, on weekends, on Saturday, and that's, again, a time when we have to have it manned and have, uh, we did, we'll take care of the traffic.
Well, that question arose from, uh, the elected officials in this courthouse, because the hours changed today, the courthouse opened till 5:00. So that question came up, and originally, when we were talking in our workshop, it was just for the courthouse, so we wanted to answer that question publicly.
And that's, that's the reason for it. Okay?
Okay.
What else we got?
I think that'll about do it. I'll go shopping.
You go shopping, and if we can, I like to have something, if we can, by our weapons. Or, it's gonna be in Sanesville this month, but middle of the month, so we can get something done, and you can have a road.
Okay.
Better than laying figures.
I'll check.
Please keep Donna in the loop.
Yeah, I could do that.
He, he's real good at doing that.
Okay.
Yeah. I will do that.
But, uh...
Well, I'll, I'll check around and see what we can come up with.
Is there any value to that old truck?
My, the one that I'm driving right now would be fine for the landfill pickup, and just get rid of the other one that's there, because it's in, it's in really bad shape, so. As far as value, probably not much.
When he says a landfill pickup, this is the one that the operators used to, to run back and forth through the equipment, over to the pit, down to the compactor backup when they receive the materials, so it's, it's, it never leaves, essentially never leaves the landfill itself. So, something that doesn't have, had, might have a light issue or two, wouldn't necessarily be a problem. Now, before we go on the wrong track, I'm not saying we run the county equipment out there that is not safe to utilize. It's, it's, but in this case, where we're, we do have some light issues, normally all that works in the daylight, and we do have another vehicle. As with any other piece of equipment, if the lights go out on one piece of equipment, you get another piece and use it, whether it be a motor grader or whatever, so. Okay?
Try to keep it all going.
All right, keep the job trashy, okay? Thanks for everything.
You bet.
Thanks for watching.
Thank you.
Donna.
See you next time.
See you later.
Okay.
Take care, huh?
Would you call and see if we can get, um...
Donna?
Donna, over, please?
While you're waiting for her, everybody got this in their packet?
Mm-hmm.
You really need to, um, sign the last four pages to hand in to her for your file.
What's the title of it?
Thanks.
The last four pages of your, of this, that you got yesterday.
Oh, yesterday's? Oh, okay.
The last four pages.
I need to, oh, I need, we personally need to sign it and give it back to you. Bingo!
Actually, to her, for your file.
Right, right. See, even the Commissioners have to follow the policies.
While we're waiting, does either one of you know where the DA's meeting is tomorrow?
Um, it was in one of the emails that we got.
It's in Salida, but I was just wondering where.
Yeah, we need to, if we can wrap our DOCs.
Oh, the, the, but, uh, DA's, uh, it's at the courthouse?
In Salida.
In Salida. And if you've not been there, it's, sometimes you gotta hunt for it a little bit, but kinda if you go to Safeway, and then you, you, diagonal as a street, kinda goes up to Hill and Eagle, and that'll take you right beside the courthouse. It's maybe a third of a mile, uh, it would be south and west of the Safeway building up there.
You want, I'll try with you, but we won't talk any business.
We, uh, they probably all write independently. Uh, tomorrow, we have a meeting, as we said, at 10 o'clock with the District Attorney. This is regarding the budgets of the District Attorney. It is a, a meeting involving all the Commissioners of the Judicial District, that live in Judicial District. And they'll come in normally, and they'll sit down and show us what they want, and we'll tell them what they don't need, and we'll go back and forth, and, and then hopefully reach some kind of a, of a workable solution at the end of the day. I, I don't know what to expect tomorrow. This'll be a little bit different than it has the past, I think, because last year, all four counties didn't agree on the, on the budget, so...
It's, it's not tomorrow at 10:00, it's tomorrow afternoon.
2:00 tomorrow.
Two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I said 10:00, I'm sorry.
You said 10:00.
No, no, it's a 2:00 tomorrow afternoon. And that's a meeting that is, uh, basically a meeting with the County Commissioners and the District Attorney. Uh, I, I guess, I, I don't know, Clint, if that's open to the public or not, I would think it probably would be.
I would imagine it is.
The public has not played a major part in the past, but, but anyone who wants to go, it's at the courthouse, in Salida. Okay, here comes a lady that, uh, from our, from Resources and Finance. For those of you who weren't here yesterday afternoon, we went through our audit review yesterday. It's a very, it's our annual audit, required by law, a third party. It's a very comprehensive audit, and when we got through yesterday's...
Oh!
Our human re, our finance people come through with flying colors. We basically had no exceptions, except maybe a key that wasn't crossed or something, but in terms of where we are in an audit review and compliance, uh, we could not have been, I don't think we could have been any better than what come across. So, congratulations to you, Donna, for the work, and John and the rest of the people that go into this. Okay?
My big question is, and it's just a question for the budget process, um, I am, just because I have no numbers on the insurance, I'm just thinking 10% increase for, um, 2018. And we'll know closer to time where we can either go higher or lower, hopefully lower. No. And if, um, when I send out the sheet, if I were to tell the department heads and elected officials, um, somewhat like usual, um, that, you know, based upon the present economic condition, the Board of County Commissioners is presently considering employee compensation increases of 3%, contingent upon projected revenues, and this may be allocated as across-the-board raises or performance, uh, review-based.
I'm gonna have you change, if I could, just one, some of the wording in there, up to 3%.
Now, how did that get established, and is there something to be discussed?
It's something that we have, at this point in time, is just throwing out there as a, as a starting figure for the departments to put into the budget what their personnel costs are going to be.
Okay.
Uh, we normally don't make, finalize this decision until after we've had the hearings, and, and we get down to the last point, the, the pay increase, and the last item that we are able to usually get a handle on, as you said, are the insurance costs. But this is just a point for them to, uh, and if they wanna come in and request more, I mean, that's, you know, this is what we're considering. I mean, that doesn't say, and to quote considering, that doesn't mean where we say yes, we're saying no.
Right.
It's a starting point.
This is regarding, regarding the timeline, when we had our workshop with Dennis, there were all those forms, a lot of those forms, she and John have to look at, which to get the ball rolling for everybody else to do, so it's just a starting...
100% I'll go with that. The question I had was, did the 3% kinda come out of the air? I know that's what it was last year, and it sounds like, yeah, it's a basis number to start with, and we'll discuss this as we go down the road. That's, that's a valid answer, I'm fine with that.
Is, in the past, um, we've always just put 3. Um, I believe there's been three times we've had no raises, and we've had 4%, as well as the 3 and 2. So, it, it's just however it, it goes through.
And 3%, I think, is kind of a ballpark pun for cost of living increase, and, and...
And I have quite a few of the forms, um, ready to go, kind of a little packet, that I, I am gonna go back and read through them, though, 'cause I did them Friday late, to see if I have any typos or anything, but really, um, quite a few of, of Dennis's forms, you know, with the memo and different instructions, um, memo notes, I have John's sheets, and, uh, like the budget notes, which, you know, will, even though they're not gonna be so much for the budget this time, will be for anyone who subsequently takes that job, that that would be so awesome, to be able to see where they're at on anything that they've planned on doing, because staff does change, and so that's, and of course, the capital requests, um, you know, they're just one sheet of paper, but maybe would help people to plan a little better, and so, um...
Well, what's significant is, when we had that workshop, we talked about teamwork. So, for us, it's important to see those capital requests...
On there.
So that we can prioritize...
Try, and try to...
What we can do. So now, we have a history of requests going forward...
Forward, and so...
For strategic planning.
Planning, and so, you know, most of them are really, um, well, and, and there was one that was, you know, it says, you know, what's the new program, and the justification, you know, just, we really, really want it, or, you know, what are the consequences of deferring it? And so, can we get some hard answers, and keep them in paper form, that we don't have to remember 10 years from now why we were doing what we did.
Right, and, and Donna just handed me a vacation request, so she will be out from the 11th through the 21st, okay?
July.
Of August.
I'm sorry.
You don't wanna go back to July, do you?
No.
Sorry.
What, what was the date? 11?
11 through 21. So, um, Friday, and then the next week. It's my anniversary vacation time.
Is that Donna with the A?
Well deserved, it's on there.
Also, and this may not be appropriate, but sometimes I do things that aren't appropriate. I would like to offer the board's condolences to Donna.
I didn't, I couldn't.
Donna, father-in-law passed away a couple, three weeks ago, uh, was also a cousin of mine, and Donna, we do offer our condolences to the family, and, and some of those things, but...
And that's actually where we're going, court site in August.
Ooh!
Yeah!
Be sure and take care of it.
That's not a vacation.
Okay, super.
And then I was going to bring another folder, but then I, I went back and forth on it. Um, I have all the reviews packaged, you know, for whenever you guys want to do yours. If you'll just stop by, I can, you know, or one, or if you wanna use my office to conduct the review, um, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I would just like to add to that, I know that specifically each one of us are responsible for certain departments, however, I would ask that if, um, any one of us, or all of us, have comments that we would like to make with regards to another Commissioner's jurisdiction, that you do that, and we communicate when we're doing these reviews, so that we can get that information to the rest of us, so that's added, okay?
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
I appreciate where you're coming from, and I, I think that's fine, uh, but also, I clarify about the process, but, but my understanding is that we'll take these reviews, and then we, as a board, go through and look at them. Part of departments, don't we, together?
If you wish to do that, we really haven't discussed how you wanna do that, so...
I don't think we came up with a plan yet.
Nope.
It's up to you, I'm just...
Yeah, no, it's time for discussion, so she knows.
You know, that way...
She's just prepared them. Ideally, we said in our workshop with Dennis, that the reviews are out there, and we should really be looking at doing these, um, we had a date of Sept, by the Sep, September, before we started the budget process, okay? So you're looking at maybe a month to a month and a half of getting this done, so, um, if we wanna do a workshop with how we wanna do that, that's fine.
I think, I think, Don, but, I think, I think it'd be simple, if I, if I've got some questions and some areas, I just give them to you, and you, you, unless I've got time to be there, but if not there, I'll just notify you, you address those, and you report, and then when we get together to do the reviews, we've already raised those questions, uh, and the, the person we're reviewing has had an opportunity to respond to those questions. Would that be reasonable?
Um, we ask for each employee to do a self-review at the same time, so they're gonna come to the table with us with their review also, so I guess I need to understand, Bob, are you saying that you want all of us to do a review?
No, and I don't know why this is so complicated, but the way that I've been through reviews for probably 30 years, was that my boss and I would sit down and do a review.
Mm-hmm.
I would evaluate myself ahead of time, and he would evaluate me ahead of time, then we'd sit down and talk about everything on the review, and then that was the report that was forwarded on to the administration. I was thinking, in this case, if I sat down with, well, let's take Tim, our Veteran Service Officer, if you all wanna come, and we set a time, but for the three of us to find the time that we can do all these reviews, it's really gonna be awkward.
No, no, I agree.
And, and you got some stuff to give me, I'll sit down with Tim, we'll go over those issues, we'll, we'll, we'll come out with a report, and then we'll come up for us to, to look at them. We've got some questions, and we may wanna invite that person to come in and say, well, why can't we do this, or I forgot this, or, Tim, you wanna do this, we're gonna build a new building, I mean, I'm just using ideas, we might have additional discussions that would include all of this.
All right, I just need some clarification. So with what I just asked for each Commissioner to write comments if they wanted to add to another Commissioner's...
Yeah, I agree, I have to talk to him, I agree with that.
So I just need clarification on that.
Yeah.
So, we need to do that as soon as possible, so we get that to the other Commissioners, okay? So, um, I'm just gonna say, for me, I'll say, for example, for you, I know you're going away, so obviously, we're not gonna do your review during that time.
No.
So, I will wanna come up with the schedule to do the people that I'm responsible for, and I'll give that to you, I'll share that with you, so that, I'd like to have your comments in advance.
Good. What, what, are these ready to go now?
Right, I have, I have them ready to go.
Okay.
With, with the copies and job descriptions and, and all of it, that you could just, you know, one at a time, or, um...
However you wanna do it, don't forget part of that package are goals.
Right.
There's a section of that with future goals.
And, and, you know, I think it could add to the performance review if, um, you know, let's, let's use Tim for an example, that you have done that, but that we know that he's gone above and beyond with the education or the credentialing, that someone put a note in there, you know, that just was their side note, that said, you know, he rocks, and add it to it.
And additional comments, it goes in the file.
Yeah, you know, just something that, because I, that I happen to know that, so, you know, if that were to help.
And I repeat, the purpose of the review is not to be negative, the position of the purpose of the review is to identify strengths and weaknesses, and if we've got some weaknesses, let's see what we can do to, to help fix them. The person can utilize additional training, needs more skills, do more job skills, whatever we need, or even something as simple as setting goals. Well, the problem I always had, but my goals were always too high. Something I wanna get done next year, well, boss always cut in half and said, maybe you can get this amount done. But there again, it's, I look at our reviews as a win-win, so that when you, if you've been in the position for 20 years, that you have all the tools you need to be the best that you can be in that position, for, so you have the opportunities to advance and the knowledge to advance.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Don, for all your...
My heart, great, appreciate it.
Would you call, like... Would you call Cindy?
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think Roger will be here at 10:00.
Pardon me?
Roger should be here at 10:00.
The last I heard, Roger was running wild hauling dirt down at Wetmore. So, if he comes, that's fine, but, uh, I feel very comfortable, I hope he can make it, but that's our, our emergency issue today, is, is to get that clean out, and he was directing traffic about 30 minutes ago when I left the radio, but...
Okay.
And if he doesn't get here, uh, if he gets here, that's super, uh, I don't know And if he doesn't get here, if he gets here, that's super. I don't know of any visiting, both him and Gary, I don't know of any crisis we have right now besides repairing rooms. Now, this road we're talking about, keepsake, is that the one that goes from Bloomingdale down across the bottom of the draw and back up on Hill to the east?
Yeah, it does. The way I, I go through, I go to down Rosita Road and it's off to the left. And it's a two-mile loop that goes all the way around.
Opposite the cemetery.
Cemetery.
Right.
Yeah. I, I wrote it yesterday at the request of.
I'm sort of not surprised. We got some washed up there. We got some orange rings.
And there's some other issues.
They worked on the hill up there and, and that's all we got on the hill is got open a clay in it and got a little slick.
Yeah. There's some of the issues that I noticed that you brought up. People have put culverts where the driveway goes over the, you know, our road and then the ditch comes up, the water drainage ditch that we put in. And either they, their culvert's full or they have no culvert at all and they just fill dirt in there and it just stops right there. So I mean.
I'm sure this isn't news. I'm sure this isn't news to you, but we have it all over the county.
I know that.
Hey, mister. What's up, gang?
Come on in.
We made her. I told you, my God, I didn't expect you because I heard you down there dragging traffic.
I am. Well, that project's going a whole lot faster than I anticipated. So.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, can't say we'll drag that stuff out of there. We're going to have to work the lower side of it too because we got a jam down there.
I can see it, man. Just pull over the cover.
We got permission to go in there.
Many save here on this.
Go in there and get that dam out, get that jam out of there. So.
What do we do down there at 290, 390? Can we clean some more of that crap out too?
Uh, yeah. I don't know if, yeah. Let's see, can we get it?
I don't know if we can walk him down the chip seal or not. Uh, probably not.
We'll see.
But please, go into the report.
So anyway, you guys got a chance to look over everything. The only question I had is to talk about was wheat spraying. Do we have that? I know that Robin handled that and we have five grand for Fremont to spray for us. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
And, and the contracts have been signed with that sprayer?
Marvelous. Great.
That was done probably two months ago.
Great. Great. And they were coming up. So, all right, we're ahead of the ballgame on that.
What else?
Uh, see, did I, did I mention chip seal? That went well for us. Did I mention that down in San Isobel?
I think so, but the crew did, my goodness, a day and a half and it chip sealed everything.
Yeah. Yeah. And they did a great job, you know. We only had one, one incident where one conveyor on the spreader decided not to work and could not figure out what happened. And all of a sudden shut it off and BR got the old panel off and jacking around with wires and the way it went. So no more trouble after that.
I know the answer in ATM asks you this question, but we had a guy in this morning up on keepsake and I, that I know that we've, you're well aware that we have had some water up in that area and so forth. There's someone's out here behind us. I'm sorry, but, but.
Yeah.
We've got a vehicle was, as time permits.
Yeah.
And how many miles of road would you guess that maybe that we have reworked and crowned and cleaned up and packed through the summers and stuff?
Since I started or just recently?
In the last couple of years.
Well, the last couple of years, we've probably done 60, 70 miles of road that we've pulled up, crowned and gravelled.
And we only have 350 in the counties.
363.
363. But sir, this is, you're aware, this is Roger, our assistant road boss.
Hey.
And.
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to get there, guys. We really are.
Well, we've got so much, just like today. We hadn't planned on pulling those crews down there to clean this out.
Yeah, that's.
And what do we have? Five county employees down there now or six working today?
What do we got? More than that. I've got probably seven. Got Larry Kevin.
So we have seven employees down there out of.
Twelve of them, 14 of them, I guess.
Okay.
But anyhow, so yeah, we're, I think that's going to, we're going to wrap that up today. I hope it looks real possible because right now we've got.
I think the message I have for Larry and we'll visit, but I've seen some pictures on South Heart Scrabble. Yeah, and there's nothing left.
Yeah, that's what he had told me. I haven't been up at for.
The road's gone.
Yeah. What'd he say? About 300 and some yards of it totally wiped out?
Oh, I suspect it's going to be more than that, but yeah. I don't see if I have a picture to show you here, but that's, that's irrelevant. But it's, now that deal's going to have to.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, the state's been working on that road. They've been putting in new pipe. They've been building diversion ditches in the road and.
The Forest Service.
Yeah.
That's a contractor and he basically had finished what he was going to do until he come back this fall. And I'm interested to see if, if anything that he did is still left there.
Yeah, I, I have not been there. I would guess probably not.
But looking at.
Where a new section's gone that, that he didn't work. So.
The whole thing is scoured out in the bottom of the business.
I, I said, I haven't been up that road for.
Sorry, what made you have to come this far for this quick of a deal?
No, that's fine. I, the wheat spraying was, and I, I had seen that they were headed up this morning. So.
Now, you were going to take the, take that one roller someplace to have it.
That roller is, is down at Four Rivers now. They're the ones that sell that particular brand. We'll let them try it, see if they can come up with something. I don't know. Chris and, Chris and BR have both worked on it and it's something with, to do with a switch or something in there, but when it gets hot enough that it just, it'll flat-set the brakes on that thing. And that's not pretty.
Anything else for us? Take your time. I'm not rushing. I know that you've got the cans burning on both ends.
Yeah. I can't right offhand. I had a couple things and I think I've covered them.
I would like this to reflect in advance. I've said it before, but while Roger is here, the situation on Saturday night, Saturday afternoon developed with that flooding. And I don't know what time you got the call, but I know this.
Seven.
Seven o'clock. And when I got down there, we had the next tobacco and dump truck and trailer and another truck and I don't know, four or five people from up here helping the Wedmore crew, which is two down there, minimize the flood damage, clearing debris out of bridges and out of culverts so we can keep the water from causing additional damage. And a big kudo to you and your crew because that's after hours and unplanned, they just jump up and run.
Yeah, that's what you do.
It's kind of like the county bridge being a fire department.
Okay. All righty. Yeah, I don't think there's anything else, anything from.
Keep up your hard work. You're doing a great job.
Super.
I appreciate it, guys.
All right. You want to be done early?
Yeah.
I'll be Monday. Come down later.
I want to go 60, 165. Yeah, I think we should wrap it up.
Super.
Thank you. I'm going to see where I'm at. I may just keep them until we're done.
I think that's my wisest decision. Thank you.
I need a few seconds of you and I'll be right back.
One, two, you're up. Donna, I have an email from a lady who wants to ask who to contact for weeds.
I gave her the, I think she contacted all of us and I got the information and passed it on.
And they do ask when we have conversation, make a lot of so they can hear so they don't think we're doing something we shouldn't be doing.
Lady contacted me. I didn't realize she contacted all of us. She had a weed issue and I was trying to find out. We do have an active weed board although, we have a weed board. Let me put it that way. And I wanted to steer her in the right direction and.
I received the information, actually all this, that Brenda showed Bob yesterday and sent her that. It was like over.
That was my Brit. You sent?
Yes. Oh, no, not Willie. It was somebody else.
And I need that from Willie.
Yes. Yeah. Now.
Are we having fun?
I am the weed guy.
Okay. Well, why don't I just give her your name and number to get ahold of them? Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Do we not get to say hello?
I never made it to your call.
Hi, Donna. To my what?
To your phone call request yesterday.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It was insane.
Um, yeah, the phone call request is Team Rubicon reached out to me. They're a veterans group that does a lot of sandbagging and help. And they reached out to me Saturday night after I left here yesterday. We were already had the balls and things rolling to try to get them to come help do some sandbagging. They're out in the field today and that's why I wanted to let Roger know that they're going to make it up Greenwood, hopefully around the soft closure. And I'm headed down to meet them. But to get Team Rubicon in, it's like 30 veterans for the weekend.
Wow.
And they'll want to camp out at the community center. We have to have a place for them to come camp if they come put in a couple days hard labor. And they can, they sleep on floors. They're veterans. They don't need much, but they just need, you know, a couple bathrooms and a place for a bunch of hardworking veterans to, to crash. And so we're trying to get that put together in the next few weeks.
Okay. Do you know what weeks, when they're going to come?
Hopefully I'll know more today. It won't be this weekend. I wish it was this weekend, but I'm, I'm hoping maybe the weekend of the 11th, 12th, whatever that is, you know. I'm not sure how the weekend falls.
Just keep me prepared.
Yeah, and then just to work.
Next weekend I have, I do have.
And, and I don't mind doing it. I just need to make sure that you and Nan and I know and that it's okay if they camp in the basement or whatever we need to do there. So even if I have to get a couple porta-potties set outside or something, I just, you know, and some of them may want to camp outside, but they've, you know, they bring their own food. They bring their own stuff and they're looking, they won't do anything in the creek. They won't get wet, but they're, they're wanting to help and they want to do some sandbagging. And I know two of the properties that sandbagged, did it improperly and lost all their sandbags. And, you know, so we've already got a load of sand down there. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what that was about. And we need to get together anyway sometime.
We need to on 911.
Yeah, we definitely do, please.
Because I was asked yesterday by the accountant.
Okay.
So I need to look at.
And I, I spoke at length with Bob yesterday and I'm willing to speak with every one of the seven of you and give you a heads up on where I think we're at.
We had probably 30 minutes or an hour yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, that was good, good time for me. So.
Well, I kind of made a promise that I would review the books.
Thank you. Yeah, we need to, we need to talk. So. Yeah, so my report's, you know, a little longer than usual. The, the hazard mitigation plan, so that's the last time I'm reporting on it. The grant closeout's in. It went through. They'll send a letter deobligating those funds. I'll send that back. I'll get the final federal and state closeouts. So we'll be good on that grant. How old are you? The mitigation tables out of there I had emailed, but here's a copy for you, all the mitigation plans. I sat through a couple webinars on FEMA grants and we'll have to start updates on that. But there's one mitigation plan that's OEM in the power company mitigating power lines. I missed a funding opportunity, but I need to start in my spare time and figure out how to get, nudge the people that need to be working on some of those goals to, to do it and let me know where we're at and as we move forward. And then yesterday you signed my EMPG. They gave us 20% more than the year prior. And I know Warfino County got cut. So, you know, that was, that was a, you know, that was a good, I think that's a good showing that they, they like what we're doing.
I think it's a very strong endorsement of what our program is up here.
I think so too. I attached a couple draft resolutions based on what El Paso County did. And, and I brought the book of resolutions Christie had put together. And I was going through resolutions last week. And we need a resolution to adopt the emergency operations plan. The draft is out. I'm going to send you a link to the Google doc because we need everybody to edit the same doc. I'm going to go to the Town of West Cliff meeting tonight. You know, and then somebody's going to have to look at theirs too. So, you know, I don't know. You know, if Jay were taking a look at it, he'd be looking at it twice. But Meredith's really been helping me on this. Our old emergency operations plan is from August of 2003. The update's been on the books since 2015. It needs closed out and we're working on annexes.
Is that something we're also forwarding to Clint or just?
Yeah, all, all of you will get it. Both towns will get it. The whole Custer County Emergency Services Council will get it. There's some, I brought one hard copy just to, you know, we've really worked on some graphics and org charts and Meredith's done some, you know, pretty cool things. We've got, you know, some, some nice stuff to put together. And we didn't reinvent the wheel. One of the, one of my contacts at El Paso County was helping with this.
What is the timeframe that you're looking at to accomplish?
The mitigation actions. It's a five-year, the plan is approved by FEMA for five years. It expires in 2022. I think it's February 10th, 2022. We have to make annual updates to the plans. Based on the FEMA grant opportunities that I missed, I want to, in fact, I called my brother in Warfino County and said, you're right in the middle of developing these goals. You need to kind of think ahead. And I didn't have that experience. But I think we could come back, especially on the fuels mitigation and the structure hardening and the, you know, just the whole fire mitigation program that FEMA has.
Well, I'm looking at your budget in here, your potential funding sources.
Yeah. So each, each line item has the responsible department, potential funding sources. And so some of that, like what I want to do for the 2018 update is put in more fire mitigation, specific projects, and then include FEMA hazard mitigation grants as a potential funding source. Because those grants can be funded 75%. And Silver Cliff, the town of Silver Cliff has one for Silver Cliff Ranch in there. And I think we can tweak that. And I think because of Silver Cliff Ranch's position, they need to get a rating on their building codes. But I think they stand a good chance of being competitive because they enforce building codes. They have building codes, yada, yada. And of course, that's something FEMA wants. And I don't know that it's a hard and fast requirement. I don't know, you know, it, but that's something what may make them more competitive than the rest of the county would be. The one on the mitigating power lines one, I don't think that's going to have any impact on, on, on whether we have codes or not. But, you know, Black Hills has been doing a lot of mitigation. They've been cleaning out all their major distribution lines and their secondary, their lines. And I think somebody smaller like San Isabelle or Sangre de Cristo is going to need our help through a FEMA PDM grant to, to be able to do that pre-disaster mitigation grant. So, but, you know, that's certainly an area we need to work on is.
I think Sangre de Cristo's been doing some.
Have they?
I've seen Aspen trucks going by at different times.
Okay, that, well, they were clearing on mine and the guys that cleared mine were doing it all for Black Hills. So, so that would be like a side meeting with those cooperators to see what they're doing.
And again, from that standpoint, it's something I think we really encourage, but at the same time, maintaining their power line railways is a responsibility of the electoral companies.
Right.
A lot of cases, they have funding. They've set aside funding to do that.
Well, and, and like with the FEMA pre-disaster mitigation grants, there's a 25% match, but so on the fire mitigation side, the homeowner can put in the 25% and FEMA will put in 75%. So if that were helping with power lines, you know, we can get four times as much done if San Isabelle only has to budget 25%. And when they look at the cost post wildfire being four times the suppression cost, I think FEMA's got a reason to be motivated and try to help with pre-disaster mitigation instead of suppression. So, yeah, so, you know, a lot of these, I don't own them. I'm just the facilitator and, and I'm going to.
Well, you guys, I think we're here, weren't you, when we went through all of this stuff? We had two or three community meetings.
Yep.
And this is a, a template.
Yeah. And so we'll have to report back. And so I'll, I'll have to take a smaller steering committee to help me do the annual updates. And FEMA has to know what the annual updates are. So that's our change to modify, delete, add. And I definitely see adding some. And then report on status of what we're doing, short-term, long-term, you know, whatever.
Remind me how long you have Meredith.
Until my $6,000 runs out or somebody gives me some more money. And, and my priority this week is to, I told Meredith I'm going to start with the county commissioners. Then I'm going to go to the South Region Board on Thursday, our meeting, because there's a, might be a grant change on a $50,000 grant. And I want a planning grant out of that. And I've even offered that, you know, as Meredith and I get these plans adopted, that if Warfino County and Los Anamos County wanted to piggyback on a planning grant, that then Meredith could take this plan and help Warfino County turn it into their plan and help. Because this plan is a, this plan is a combination of the Baca County plan and the El Paso County plan. It's what Christie worked on based off of Baca County and what we took from Lonnie and worked off of El Paso County. And that's, it is. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. The COOP plan is based off of the Fremont County plan. And I don't know where he stole it from, but, and then I got a call from Chaffey County yesterday. He's looking for a debris management plan. And I said, call Steve Marzy. He's got it in Fremont County.
Yeah, but that's great.
But if we could do that, Meredith wants to stay. She's looking at renting a house. She was going to come this morning, but we were on for 11 o'clock. And I told her they're always late. So she's going to miss you. But she is going to be there Thursday afternoon at the recovery meeting. And then, you know, maybe the state would pitch in. But yeah, she's actually put in a lot of hours this last week, more than the 20 a week I had her budgeted for. I told her if it quits raining, she could go camping for a week and take some time off. But, so the, the big, you know, the other big thing that I. But, so the big, you know, the other big thing that I had was similar to how we did the hazard mitigation plan. We'll have to have a resolution to adopt. We took El Paso County's resolution and modified it for Custer County, and I included that on my report, and Clint and Brenda have the original docs. And then El Paso County also had, Meredith and I liked how they had done a resolution to reaffirming that the Board of County Commissioners is the agency responsible for the daily supervisory, administrative, and budgetary authority for the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. There's included the DARA, and we don't want me to be the DARA in Custer County. El Paso County's a lot different. But I went through all the old resolutions, and there's nothing like that. And Custer County Emergency Management actually started out under the Sheriff's Office, but I've never seen a resolution anywhere that says where we belong or that you're reaffirming your commitment to the program and to the state statutes and some of that. So that one is totally optional. That's, you know, something Clint should look at and see if you even want to do that, but the, we'll definitely have to have a resolution to adopt. If we do a resolution of some sort affirming where it belongs in the scheme of things in Custer County, then I would like to include that resolution in the plan, and that's, and that's what El Paso did, and that, I think that's nice.
How close is the plan? I mean, is there a full in-process work or are we in the?
You're really close to the end. We're going to, we know you're busy with meetings for the next couple of days, so we're tweaking a few more things, but it's 95% done. It's ready for you to start. I'll send you the link to Google Docs and have people start giving me their comments. And I put in my meeting minutes, this will be revision one, 1.0, and then if we just fix pagination, spelling, if we find comments, the 1.1, the 1.2, the 1.3, we'll note them, but I don't want to come back to you. If we have a major change to make, that's when we'll go to 2.0 and then, you know, 3.0 for major, and there's a section for summary of changes. It won't really be the chart that's in there because it'll just be typed in. And then it assumes that, you know, we're adding, constantly adding and updating annexes and, because this is what they consider a base emergency operations plan, but then your evacuations plans and all your ESF plans and, you know. Yeah. Your incident action plan for how you respond to flash flooding as opposed to how you respond to wildfire are going to be separate annexes, so.
We've spoken about this before, but could you kind of reiterate to me how FEMA reacts in the county with building codes, without building codes, with specific respect to the emergency operating plan?
The emergency operating plan is going to reference the Stafford Act and some of the federal regulations. It's going to reference the Colorado Emergency Operations Plan and some of the Colorado plans. And then it references the specific state statutes where you, as an authority board, as a Board of County Commissioners, have obligations and responsibilities to enact codes and ordinances and, you know, evacuations, disaster declarations, all the things you would do that I would never have the authority to do that to save, you know, life, life safety first. And we added a chart in here where it's life safety, property, and then you get into, you know, like water quality and, you know, yada, yada. But it's always going to be life safety first. So when you start looking at grants, the hazard mitigation plan is an absolute requirement. We could not apply for any of those grants without a current hazard mitigation plan. So I actually went through the pre, the notice of intent to apply for a FEMA grant. I went through two webinars, talked to some folks at the state, got online and was working on that last week for an intent for preliminary grant, and I was using Silver Cliff Ranch as a possibility. There were four immediate questions, you know, "Do you have a current hazard mitigation plan? When was it adopted? When does it expire? Do you have building codes?" And yes or no. And then if you have building codes, there's a national rating system that they rate you, sort of like the ISO codes for fire where you're a 1 to 10 and were 9 and 10. They want to know how you, how you are rated there. And Silver Cliff, I talked to Larry Webber. He said they don't have that. I'll talk to Roger. We'll see where we're at. Those are yes or no questions. There's four questions, and then they want to know your rating. I don't know if that completely throws us out of the grant ballpark or not. There's $90 million of grants this next year, and it's a competitive process. So if you, if I had got the notice of intent in now, we would, we would have been selected or rejected in February of 2018 for funding in 2019. So now, if I'm a year out doing the same thing on some of these grants, I'm looking at funding in 2020. So, you know, so I did reach back out to the gal at the state and ask her, you know, "Is it even worth my time?" But I think, you know, we need to look at some of that. And I had some other handouts for you that talk about your, it's, they were from, Dennis Page brought them in on the fireside, but talks. And, you know, as you get into that whole building code, you know, analysis, pros and cons and what you want to do, you know, you can obvious, you can have some options. You can make things tough. You can make things easy. You can not worry so much on structure and say, "Now, we're more worried about mitigation and clearing properties." You can look at what other counties have done. Again, you know, I think you could, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But some of the things, you know, that we're learning, like, you know, I have a wraparound deck that's wood. I'd love to go synthetic. I've got vinyl gutters. Now, after what I know, I wish I could afford to just replace them tomorrow. But, you know, there's, even for $500, there are things a homeowner can do to start hardening their homes. And part of it's education, but I think maybe part of it is a nudge that, you know, as you start to build, zoning starts looking at, "Let us help you," you know, decide where to, and Donna and I have talked about this on her land, you know, "Look at that proper building site. Where do you want to be?" You know, "Fire runs up a ridge. You don't want to build that house on the top of the ridge." Maybe you do, but you need to have all the facts before you make that decision. And, you know, I was just up at Thomas's.
But in all cases, I think, Jay, it comes down to the first initial responsibility is your own. You need to do what makes sense for you to, to save your place, to maintain your place, to mitigate the stuff around it. And as I've gone through this, and this is, you know, like a river with a lot of branches on it. But we come down and say, "Building code, yes or no?" Well, then there's lots of streams off of that as to what you do. And the building code may facilitate something that we can without one, but without it, there may be some other things of, you know, individual items, like mitigation around your home is something you could do which wouldn't necessarily be a part of a building code. Because that's already in place. You need to come in and clear around, defensible space around your own property.
And there are some communities that have both. They not only have very strict building codes, but then they have wooey codes of, you know, what they want you to do around your home. And I'm not, you know, I think you could have a combination there or not, but I'm not saying, you know, that's the best approach.
And I agree with what Bob's saying. My real question was the FEMA and the grant process, building codes, no building codes.
Are we?
How does that all come together? That's really where I was.
And I'm trying to get a.
And I think, and I think you've given me a lot of insight into that.
And I've asked the state for a definitive answer, and I don't have it yet, but, you know.
That'd be wonderful if we have.
If it's a complete, you know, you've got your hazard mitigation code, but without ABC on top of it, you're never going to get funded, then I want, I don't want to waste our time.
Correct.
And same thing, I sent an email out to Christie and to Mike Schaub today at the state, and I said, "I think I already know the answer, but where some of the homes in, say Waldo Canyon Fire, were bought out for post-fire, wildfire flash flooding, I don't think that's an option here." We could have a home, and he's insured, and he takes a beating and takes a beating and takes a beating. I think because we do not participate in the NFIP, and I'm not a big fan of it anyway, I'm not, you know, it's not an option for us at this point. We could not do the flood mapping anyway, but I don't think there's those opportunities where somebody could get built, you know.
And I really agree with Bob. I mean, you get flooded out once, and you go, "Well, it's a 100-year flood. I'm not going to worry about it." You rebuild, you get flooded out three years later. Whose responsibility is this?
Yeah.
I mean, really and truly, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's our personal responsibility, but if we're going to have government assistance helping people with their insurance or with rebuilding or with whatever, grant money to do the mitigation, that kind of thing, that's what I'm curious to know if the building codes are part of that. And if they're not, that's fine. I just don't know.
And I'll try to get the definitive answer on that. The, you know, the other thing is we get government assistance in the form of, you know, $11 million fire suppression. That was government assistance. We haven't seen a bill yet.
But you will.
And, and some of those, you know, public assistance is different in a fire than a flood. If, if eight communities had flooded Saturday night and we met our $13,000 threshold, whatever it is, it's relatively small, but the state has to meet a $1 million threshold. So Beulah, some of their road rebuilding, they had met that threshold from the 2013 floods or 2015 floods, I'm not sure which. And Christie said they were still in the process of rebuilding, and that flooding in May wiped it out. So FEMA's going to help them rebuild, and they've got some assistance because they already qualified prior before on a disaster. So an isolated storm like this, you know, we're not going to have it. We're not going to meet those, we're not even going to attempt to meet those thresholds.
I don't think you were present yesterday. We pretty much scheduled a meeting for August the 10th at 7:00.
Okay.
It's a public meeting. The Board of County Commissioners will be conducting that meeting, but we want to find out from public more opinion, and we do want to hear from planning and zoning as to why there was just one meeting and a letter of recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll do my due diligence and get an answer from, from the state or from the feds on that.
If you could.
Yeah, I think that's important, so I'll put that on my calendar. I did see the email this morning from Brenda.
Another problem we have on flooding, Jay, if we come in and say, "Okay, these structures in Wetmore are in a designated floodplain," immediately, well, I don't know how to quit this, but the value of those properties can be significantly reduced when they go get loans because they are in a designated floodplain.
I understand.
When they're either can be subject to flooding is a whole different take, and it's just.
And we're the only county in the South Region that I know of without NFIP flood mapping. And, you know, Christie had proposed a $500,000 grant several years ago. That's not even available now. I mean, it might be, but I don't see us going for that anyway. So we don't even use the word floodplain in Custer County. We've been describing our problem areas as a potential flood inundation area because we can't, there's no flood mapping. We can't say it's a floodplain.
And I want to make it clear that we are not advocating floodplain designations.
Oh, yeah.
We're just going through regulations, going through things that are happening, but we are not at this point as an issue.
I don't see that on the table in the next five or 10 years, period, so, you know, we don't have that much of an area. I did have a long talk with Paul Crispin yesterday. I saw some Aaron's photos. South Hardscrabble got whacked hard. I just met with Aaron Woking, and he was already on my calendar based on the state's letter that they weren't going to give us funding. So he and I were supposed to meet this afternoon. He moved that up to this morning. I went through some of the photos, showed him some things. I'm going to send him the USGS stuff. We're going to have a conference call either Friday or next week. He's going to put together a proposal that would use some transponders and some other, you know, fancy gadgets, and it wouldn't be a siren system, but it would, it would use sat phone technology and then let the National Weather Service and dispatch and me and a whole bunch of people at the same time know it would, if Beulah goes with that system, I could be getting alerts on their water issues, they could be getting alerts on my water issues, and the state has committed to funding their system. So Aaron was heading over to Beulah. Part of what happened is our dispatch did not get notified. I, I've got the timeline. I'm trying to get the printout from Joe. There was only one resident that called and he reported heavy rain, not high waters, and National Weather Service missed it the way the storm tracked. The radar didn't do it. So, you know, we're looking at things to improve. And one of the firemen down in Wetmore emailed me and said, "Well, you know, who exactly is supposed to notify dispatch?" My answer back to him was, "The public. Nobody called 911 to say we had a flood."
Did you see that picture?
Yeah, yeah. And that's just about a half mile down.
Those are pictures of what we have in South.
Did Beulah get anything?
Uh, there was some localized flooding, but nothing. And 387 wasn't even touched going over North Creek. So Aaron left, and he was going to drive 387 over to Beulah, and he has a follow-on meeting with Chief Warrior, so he's going to look at all those spots. But we, we were kind of proposing, and again, this would be if Colorado DHSEM provided the funding through the disaster deck, a combination of what USGS had recommended, but maybe rain gauges up high in South Hardscrabble, because I don't think we could get a stream gauge. In fact, the stream rerouted itself Saturday night up in South Hardscrabble, and most of the road sounds like it's gone. But then some gauges, and then Bob and I talked about calculating CFS under the bridge at 387, and Teresa's working on some CFS calculations for Thursday, and some of the technology that they use could do that, too. If we had a chart and said, you know, "The bridge at 387 is this wide and this high, and if the water's at this level, this is the CFS," well, their calculations could tell us the water's 30 inches, the water's 36 inches, the water's 42 inches. And I did ask him, I said, "What do we do if it's debris? How do we know if debris is what's raising the water?" But what we saw Saturday night was when the debris busted loose, that's when the surges came.
So are you, I know you said you have this crew coming in to sandbag.
Uh-huh. Team Rubicon?
Do you have enough sandbags?
I can get more. We'll have to pay them back. We've got a stash in Roden Bridge and West Cliff, and we've probably still got about 3,000 in Wetmore. I can get more from Pueblo, but we'll have to pay them back and buy some, and it's cheaper to buy in bulk. I don't have a, you know, date set, but they're really trying to come in, and we're looking at at least maybe six houses if the landowners agree. And Team Rubicon uses their own volunteer agreement, so if they come in to work on your property, like if they work on Bernie and Barbara's property, then Bernie and Barbara will have to say, "This is what we want." Some of the pushback I've gotten from the communities down there is, you know, getting to the signs and, you know, "This is going to hurt our property values." And so I told, I told the individual that told me that, I said, "Well, a lot, sandbags around the houses are going to probably give a perception of more and, and just the damage alone." One of the houses there was supposed to close today, and so the other owners had already moved out, and I believe they have a closing today, and it's the one just up from the one that got hit the worst, so, you know. But it's going to happen when the grass is laying down and the channel's eroding and the debris's moving down. And all that debris is unburned, small debris. You know, the potential for the.
None of it's from the fire download.
When we start seeing large burnt trees coming down, we've got even a bigger problem. And, you know, the folks like Teresa that have said, "This is going to happen, this is going to happen," you know, they've proved they were right, and so, anyway, yeah, the big, you know, so I guess, you know, the big request from me is the resolution to adopt says you've had a chance to look at it, whether you participate or not. And even if it's, you know, still needs some work, we get it adopted, we keep working, needs some work, we get it adopted, we keep working, but then we go from a 2003 plan to a 2017 plan.
This has been on the table for, my gosh, four years.
There's always been a lot of pushback with them.
And I think what we have here is a very workable plan, and it is emergency management. It's nothing that I see infringes on anyone's personal rights or property. Some things that, if we have a problem, just like this weekend, it wasn't, you know, the flood down there in Ark Creek was an issue, but in the world we're seeing, it hardly made a drop of water, you know? But, emergency management was involved in it, Roden Bridge responded, Sheriff's Department responded, all the people, we basically had a plan in place, and it just went like clockwork.
Well, the resolution to adopt even says that it can no way, in no way can it supersede your statutory authority as commissioners, you know? Doesn't have that kind of teeth, and, you know. There's a section in the plan that says the community has a responsibility to mitigate, to prepare, to have an emergency plan, to, you know, to call 911 and let us know, and that's been in there for years, you know, it's, you see something, say something.
Yeah, but the public doesn't recognize that.
It's just continue to do the outreach and public education and-
Do you have a deadline? When you send us that link, will you please put-
What I would like, and that's why I put the draft resolutions in there, because I don't know your process for resolutions, or which direction you wanna go, but if you need to read those and get them on the record before, but what I'd like to do is adopt this, when I come back at my next monthly meeting, have you pass that resolution to adopt, and then if you wanna do the resolution to reaffirm your, you know, your management responsibility over the program, but that, like I said, you know, you can read that one and decide if you wanna go that route or not, but if you, if you need to get that on the record for a couple weeks ahead of time or something, then, you know, we could do that mid-month, or-
Just get that, too, it's pretty, you know-
Okay. Yeah, I'll email you the link, and you can start looking at. It is a lot of reading, and it's about 20 pages shorter than the old one.
The thing that you need to remember is that we are adopting this as a board. We have the authority to change any part of this, or to suspend any part of this at any time, as a board, we deem it necessary. Right?
I would say change. You are required by state statute to have a plan.
Well, I say change is-
You cannot suspend, but-
Modify.
Yeah, at any time, you can say, "Gee, Cindy, on paragraph 3 on page 6, so I don't, let's reword that. That could be done tomorrow." And so, the way we've written this is that, you know, those minor revisions can be done without resolution, you know, if you see something. And the same thing, you know, Shannon sees something, or EMS sees something, you know, it's-
How do you want us to comment if we see something?
Uh, Google Docs allows you to edit, and it'll actually show, "These are Donna's comments, these are Jay's comments, these are Shannon's comments."
Okay.
And you can suggest a strikeout and rewording, you can suggest whatever you want, so we'll get that final version on and let you start taking a look.
Thank you.
So, and then I will pop into Tana West Cliff tonight, under Public Comments, I'll say, you know, the quick and dirty, the same thing, has to be on their agenda for September, and then Monday night, I believe, is Silver Cliff, so I'm gonna run it the same way you ran, Hazard Mitigation.
Can you also send us a estimate of what you think Meredith is gonna be?
Running out of, okay. Yep, and then-
Now, she has her degree now, right?
Yeah, she has her bachelor's degree, I think it's International Emergency Aid, something like that. She is great with the plans, so, yeah, so I will make my pitch Thursday morning to, for a planning grant out of that grant change. That may go over like a lead balloon, but I'm trying to get Warfords County and Trinidad County to back me, because we're three of five votes, so.
And I will be attending that meeting in support of you.
I appreciate that. So, yeah, so those meetings are Thursday morning, 9:30 is the South Region meeting at Wetmore, Thursday afternoon, I believe it's 1:30 is the recovery meeting at Wetmore, so, I'm not sure who else is coming, I think they're gonna end up getting a little smaller.
It's an education if you've not been to one.
Yeah, so, all right.
Is that similar to what was done in Pueblo?
Yeah, you made the Pueblo one, Jay made the one in May, right after the flooding, and I think that one in May, right after the flooding, is what the state, was the impetus to get the state to give Pueblo some money, so the timing on this one's good to maybe get Custer County some funding.
What do you think, Jay?
Thursday? The 3rd? 9:30 and 1:30 in Wetmore. I'll be in Wetmore all day, I'll head down there early.
I have to be in Pueblo.
Yeah, so, anyway, yeah, yeah, let me know, there's something.
When you can, just shoot me some dates that are available.
Pretty much any time next week, if that works for you.
Not until the latter part.
Okay.
Pick up, do you have your packet for evaluations?
My?
Our job evaluation packet. Okay, I think we're getting ready to go out, you and I need to set a time to hold that together.
Is that in, in the-
Donna's got it.
Okay. And, you know, I, you're gonna have to be careful with the way my grant works, 'cause I know the evaluations said that they're October. My grant cycle is January through December, so Christie Coleman is one of my evaluators, and my performance is basically based off of the EMPG.
That's at the state level.
Performance, yeah, but we can do the evaluation, nothing will happen until January.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, in terms of like my goals, when you're thinking, and I need to email you that, my second quarter EMPG report, but just keep in mind that if the state is funding $36,000 with my program, and they're saying, "This is what I need to accomplish," that you kinda need to be in line with that, 'cause if you say, "This is what we want you to do," and the state's saying, "This is what we want you to do," that's gonna put me between a rock and a hard spot.
But then I think we maybe need to make a notation or something in our job description and on our records, that in this particular case, where it is a lot of state funding-driven, that that will also was a part of the evaluations, is a state's evaluations.
And I talked to Christie, I'll probably get my packet for 2018 sometime in November, last year didn't get it here till December, 'cause you guys adopted it, I think, at the January meeting, and you, yeah. You'll do, okay, I will let you.
Not a crisis and painful.
I'm not worried about it, just, I just wanted you to be aware, but I will send you the one, my second quarter review, and Christie's actually supposed to sit down with me quarterly as my regional field manager, but I have to turn those reports in quarterly, and they roll up, and they must like something, or they wouldn't have approved the additional funding, so.
I mean, for me, just in my observation, you've got a huge amount of goals that you set and deadlines, so there's a lot there.
There's a lot there that's already driven, yeah, and the only thing that pulls me a different direction is floods and fires and-
Well, and this is where-
And family a little bit, my father will be a little bit of a-
It has to be, you know, we forget that she's an administrator as well as a responder.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a big part of the challenge, but, and I know, we, I don't wanna make a decision, a day or discussion, but if we look at how emergency operation responsibilities have expanded in the last 10 years, and we were at a part-time job and low level, understand, working on a cardboard box, now you can see that we've come a long way somewhere, but we need to do what we can, we need to do what's best for our county, so that we are in a situation that would minimize any damage or the impact of any emergency that we have. Fire still remains, and the floods are an issue topic today, but fire is still our primary area that we have to, I feel that we have to.
Yeah, well, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the top two, you know, well, the top four, but it's wildfire, wind, winter storm, and hail. Flood doesn't even make the list of the top four all hazards, all natural hazards, so, you know, this is secondary to wildfire, but, so Meredith, yeah, she's got her degree, she was looking at going to graduate school in January, that plan's on hold, she'd really like to stay, she's looking at signing a lease and having a house here in town, and she's working off and on chop shop for her folks, and she's working part-time at the coffee shop, and, you know, I'd like, I'd really love to be able to keep her around 20 or 32 hours a week or something, and get, you know, get caught up on some of this planning, so, as we come back, and I'll get through my budget packet here, but, you know, I can, I am looking for funding anywhere I can get it, so.
After they got back, got home from Operation Center Sunday morning, while I guess Meredith couldn't sleep, so she got up, worked on a few boards for a while.
She worked on the EOP till 3:00 in the morning, 'cause she was, she had some adrenaline going.
What else?
I think that's it, unless you have any questions of other stuff on there, so, you know, we're working on the three-year Training and Exercise Plan. Shannon has one that we wanna work as a tabletop into an exercise, we've discussed what that would be. It involves the courthouse, so we would look at an exercise in the early part of '18, tabletop, and then moving into a full-scale at some point, and then all the other stuff in our three-year TEP, which just evolved, so it's really looking at year one, but two and three, what do we wanna add, and then, then they keep developing, 'cause it's an annual thing, we have to do a capabilities assessment that the state has tasked us with, so I'm working on that. There's a lot going on, and then just the plans, trying to get them actually signed and adopted. Christie got a lot of things, you know, 89%, 80, 90% done, and then got stonewalled, and then things have changed, and they all need updated. So for me, they're like 10% done, because I haven't read a page of them, and, you know, but we'll keep plugging away, we're making progress, and, you know, Meredith's been a lot of help, so.
Good.
Yeah, so, if you're there Thursday, you'll meet her.
And I think we've got a super working relationship with the other agencies.
The networking, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I have to do, you know? And when I, when I mess up, I have to say sorry, and I did apologize to a couple homeowners in Wetmore. You know, I need to go up and knock on the door first, and not start getting the bug